Julie. Hi Cassandra. Montana, sorry.
How are you all doing?
Good, how about you?
Good, can't complain. I just got an AC unit in my office, so.
Such.
Yes.
Pretty essential.
Town hall is getting a little sticky, to say the least, so everyone's starting to get AC.
So what kind is it? Is it when you open the window and go through the window kind of thing?
Yeah, it's um, I'm not.
The units that are on the floor and just pipe through the window?
Exactly, yeah. I honestly didn't even think our office was gonna get one because it's pretty cool down here compared to the rest. They're like, nope, everyone gets one. Great.
It's excellent. Make productivity better, right?
To say the least, yeah.
We're just waiting on our chair, Tanya. Let me just give it a minute or two and start because I don't know if we should.
Josh, is Steve coming?
I don't know. She sent out the whole invite to everyone, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
And we have some slides to share. I don't know if we'll be able to do that or if you need to make Fran Sully's my co-presenters or anything like that in Zoom.
Yes. Do you have a share a screen green button at the bottom of your window or not? You do? Okay.
It does. It doesn't look restricted, actually, so it should be good. Does it work for you, Fran Sully?
Do you want to, I'm gonna try. I'm just gonna hit. Tanya, real quick. Okay.
So Josh, did Tanya put the agenda together with the minutes? We can't do them anyway. We don't have a quorum.
We can't do what?
The minutes. They were, there was an agenda like this was a. I was surprised at that.
Yeah.
That feels like it should be in our other meeting, not this.
Right. Well, it's five past. I think we probably need to. To start, right?
I think so. It's recorded, so everyone can see it anyway later.
Okay, well, I guess we'll turn it over to Julie and Fran Sully's. Thanks for setting this up or agreeing to take us through this.
That sounds great. Maybe we could start with some brief introductions. Be great to hear who you all are as well. My name's Julie Curdy. I'm the Director of our Clean Energy Team at M A P C. For those not familiar, we're the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and we're the regional planning agency that serves the 101 cities and towns in and around greater Boston. So we, I think with one of your former staff perhaps, applied for a regional energy planning assistance grant from Department of Energy Resources, D O E R, so acronym soup. And the grant covered us supporting, I believe, your annual report to the Green Communities Program two years ago, and then developing a greenhouse gas inventory for Cohasset using the greenhouse gas inventory tool that we developed as part of our Net Zero Playbook. We can tell you more about after. I mean, that's a little context there. And then I'll turn over to my colleague Fran Sully's for her introduction. I mean, she's actually more of the expert on how to use the tool and has created, I think, we counted five or six inventories for different cities and towns to date. She did not do the Cohasset inventory. That's one of our other colleagues who's not with us anymore, but we feel like we're very happy to share the results with you. So, over to Fran Sully's.
Thanks, Julie. Hi all. Again, yes, Fran Sully's. I am a Clean Energy and Climate Planner One at M A P C with the Clean Energy Department. It's great to be here with you all, and I will pass it on to Josh.
Great. My name's Josh Don. I'm a member of the Alternative Energy Committee in Cohasset. Pass it over to Chris.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Aldison. I'm a member of the committee as well, and I hold M A P C in very high regard. I used to be chairman of the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. And you did a lot of good work in sort of the housing space, and I look forward to sort of a new, sort of a domain here this afternoon, learning about what you do. Thank you.
Debbie, you wanna go?
I'm Debbie Cook, and I'm a member of the Alternative Energy Committee.
Montana.
Yeah, hi everyone. My name is Montana Castle. I'm the Town of Cohasset Sustainability Planner and Grid Coordinator. I don't work a lot with AEC. I focus more on harbor resiliency, but I cannot help myself and sit in on this meeting to hear what you guys have done, so thank you.
And Steve is also a member. Steve, can you hear us? There is, you know, take yourself on.
I can.
Yeah, you know, just introduce yourself real quick. We're just gonna get started.
I'm Steve Warner, resident Cohasset member of the Cohasset Alternative Energy Committee. Let's see, who do we have here yet? Oh, Debbie's on. You're on, Josh.
Yeah.
Tanya yet, do we?
No.
I'm sorry. I had, I clicked on the wrong link. I guess Tanya sent us a couple of links. The first one said, waiting for a meeting to start, but it didn't start, so I found a more recent email and managed to get on.
I think we are just starting, so your timing is great, actually. So what we wanted to propose is, Fran Sully's has some slides she can share that will walk you through the results from the greenhouse gas inventory. And we can also seek a peek lightly at the Excel model that you all should have access to in case you want to dig into that more, and we can point you towards at the end some other resources if you want to use the Excel model more directly, or learn more about some of our Net Zero Planning resources and have a conversation about some of the work you might be doing in this space beyond the inventory, if that works, was what we wanted to propose, so.
Great.
All right, so I will turn it to Fran Sully's.
Awesome. Thanks, Julie. Let me share my screen. All right, can folks see this slide?
Yep.
Awesome. Is it still good?
Yep.
Yep.
Great. Yeah, so as Julie said, I'll give a presentation, you know, higher level overview of the findings for the 2017 greenhouse gas emissions inventory for Cohasset. Again, we have provided the town with the Excel based tool, so if you do want to have a more detailed overview, you'll have that access, and then we'll also share like the step-by-step guide and other resources as Julie was noting. So really quickly, our agenda for today for this presentation, we did welcomes and introductions, so hello everyone again. And then I will give a quick overview of the report charts that are generated by the inventory. Some of them are like the community-wide emissions graph, building energy emissions, another graph which is like the community-wide emissions one, but with the municipal emissions is aggregated, so that you can see what the municipal activities are emitting, and then also the rest of the community activities. And then there is a slide with some infographics that may be helpful in case you want to share with community members and such. And then I will go over a quick kind of like a concept map on the GHD tool tabs overview for the Excel. There's a lot of tabs in the Excel spreadsheet, and I think looking at a higher level at this kind of concept map type image is helpful in thinking about how to look through the data. And then there are just some quick important notes on the data and resources and guides. So here you have the community-wide emissions graphic that was generated by the tool for 2017 for Cohasset. So here in this graph specifically, it doesn't go as much into detail as one that I will show in a couple of slides, but it does show the three sectors that the inventory looks at. So there's stationary energy, transportation, and waste. So you can see here that stationary energy accounts for almost two-thirds of all the emissions in 2017 for Cohasset, so it's about 60.1%. Then transportation is 38.7%, and then waste is responsible for about 1.2% of the overall community-wide emissions. And then here on the right, you can see that stationary energy includes things such as residential, commercial, industrial, and manufacturing buildings emissions, as well as some other types of equipment. For transportation, it's on-road vehicles, so for passenger and commercial trips taken within Cohasset's boundary, as well as some trips from like public light and heavy railways within the boundary. And then for waste, there is municipal solid waste disposed in or by landfills, incineration, et cetera, and some other like processes and fugitive emissions from treating wastewater in the community. And then here you can see on the bottom, bottom right, that Cohasset's total GHD emissions in 2017 were 77,421 metric tons of carbon equivalents, which means it's not just carbon dioxide, but also other greenhouse gases aggregated for this data. And then for this side, you can see some of the graphics that are generated by the inventory for building energy emissions. So here on the left, it shows the percent of total building energy emissions by customer type and fuel. So one example is in the yellow, it's kind of small, but it's the commercial and manufacturing industries. The fuel oil is responsible for about, I want to say that looks like maybe like 2% of the building energy emissions for that fuel. And then there is residential fuel oil, which seems like a bigger portion, residential electricity, et cetera, as you keep looking at the graph. And then the biggest portion, I think, here is about, I want to say 35%, and it's the natural gas used in residences. And then here on the right, we have a graph on the percentage of building energy emissions by source energy. So from the buildings in Cohasset, we see here that natural gas is responsible for 44% of those emissions in 2017. And then that's followed by electricity, which is 31%, and then fuel oil, which is 25%. And down here, based on some other calculations, approximately 70% of the total stationary energy emissions came from residential buildings in Cohasset, and that means just taking, like the residential building stationary energy emissions and dividing that by the total stationary emissions, and it gets to 70%. And as I said before, the majority of residential buildings' emissions came from natural gas, and then that's followed by electricity and fuel oil. Uh, yes, Deborah, I see you have a question.
So the electricity for 31%, that is based on the generation of electricity that feeds us? So if that becomes more renewable, that percent should go down substantially, right?
That is.
So that was the percent in 2017, but today it's probably better than that, right?
A little. It would have to be calculated, but if the renewable energy in Cohasset has increased, it would be, as you said. But I can't say for sure that it has gotten any better since we have those calculations.
It would have, because I was trying to remember, you guys don't have a agreement to split aggregation program yet, right? Like, I know you started that process in.
Yeah, we do.
You do have it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so this would not reflect that, because you started that, I think, was it? I'm not sure what year you've got approved.
10% over the state.
Yeah, so then that number would be smaller. It would also be smaller because the state's renewable portfolio standard has required increasing amounts of renewable energy each year as well. So for anyone not in your program, which usually includes commercial businesses, sometimes the municipal government, that electricity would follow the state's renewable portfolio standard. So that number, kind of looking at it, should shrink on its own. Based on state policy, it's the other two, the natural gas, the fuel oil, where a lot of effort would probably want to be focused on the building side.
Thanks, Julie.
Fran Sully, may I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thing that interests me the most, and I'm, I want to understand where these numbers came from. So did you ask the utilities, electric utilities, which are the same as the natural gas utilities, how much energy they delivered to Cohasset? Or, and then ask all the oil providers, individual companies, how much they delivered to Cohasset? Is that how you got these numbers, or how did you get them?
Yeah, so I forget which utility is the one that services Cohasset.
Natural gas, and natural, I'm sorry.
National Grid.
National Grid.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, so we have, some of our sources are like our mass save data on residential and commercial spaces and such that's aggregated from utilities. And we get that from their online resources. And then for the fuel oil, I believe that's from some, it's, the acronym is N, N saves, I believe, Julie. I'm not sure what it stands for, but they're codes for various buildings, and I believe that fuel oil is noted within those. And then for residences, I believe it should come from those. But I will also share the step-by-step guide, which notes all those various resources in case what I'm saying is inaccurate. So you can also take a look at that resource once you send that over and share.
Yeah, I was trying to look at National Grid's website and figure out how much, but all I saw were aggregated numbers across the state. I didn't see anything broken out by town. Were you able actually to get data by town, or did you just take an average across the state for the number of people in Cohasset?
Yeah, for mass save, that data is by town, by city and town, by municipality, for electricity and natural gas. For fuel oil, I'm not sure.
Okay, so they actually know how much. It's not a, not a guesstimate based on the population and census data, but actually how much utility was delivered to each individual town? Is that your understanding?
For natural gas and electricity, but for fuel oil, it is based on census bureau estimates, I believe.
For fuel oil, it is, okay. Yeah, because we don't. Electricity and natural gas, it's, it's actual numbers that they, utilities actually deliver to Cohasset, you're saying.
So it's my understanding that you'll probably cover some of this as we progress, right? What the sources and all of this.
We weren't planning to get into such level of detail, but we can screen share with you if you want to, the step-by-step guide into how the inventory works, where the data sources are covered in detail, and then also the Excel workbook. We can walk through that at a high level. I don't think we'll have time to data dive into all of that in great detail, but we can definitely show you where all of that comes from, in case you'd like to dive in more to the data. But.
Yeah, I mean.
Very clear methodology to use that I can show you. We can walk through it.
The reason I'm asking is because I'm wondering if this methodology is good for tracking trends. For instance, if we get more Cohasset residents to switch from gas to to heat pumps, say, and induction stoves and so forth, to decrease their, their natural gas consumption, will that be reflected in new figures? Or will we be thrown in with all the other towns and we'll just get an aggregate for the, you know, what's happening in Massachusetts as a whole? That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, natural gas and electricity data should be by town. It is in mass save through their resource by city slash town, so those numbers should be local data. It shouldn't be aggregated.
Okay, so since this is 1917 data, or 2017 data, it would be wonderful if we could get an update so we could see how much progress we made.
Yeah, so that is on the agenda for this next year. The big holdup to updating our greenhouse gas inventory tool has been the state's vehicle census, which is actually still from 2014. They have just released the updated data as of this month. And to make it compatible with our tool, we have to do some analysis of the census, which then would show, for example, how many electric vehicles there are for the community and hybrid electric vehicles, et cetera. And then we would need to go back to the consulting partner who built our tools to update it, but that's one of our big priorities, and we do have some funding identified to do that. So hoping to be able to do that within the year, make that update, so that then folks can go. And with whatever baseline we choose, based on the data available, but definitely more recent than 2017, you'll be able to see progress.
Okay, and so you'll know in each town how many electric vehicles are registered in each town.
Dave, could we, could we get through the presentation, see what it is, and visit all these questions?
Sure.
Because they might get, some of them might.
This is the same, this is the same presentation we saw in 2017, right?
Right, well, but.
No, we made this inventory a year ago for you all.
Oh, a year ago? Okay.
Yeah.
I thought we saw some presentation way back when, but okay, sorry. All right, I'll shut up.
No worries. Thanks all for the questions. All right, awesome. So this next slide is on the community-wide emissions with the municipal emissions disaggregated, as I had noted before. So the numbers are pretty small, so I'll just go through them briefly. So you can see here that there is like the light green and the light blue with really big portions. This here is passenger vehicles, which are responsible for about 35.1% of the community-wide emissions in 2017 for this town, and then residential buildings, which is 42.2%, which is the highest percentage out of all the other categories. And then after that, we have commercial and institutional buildings and manufacturing industries, 14.2%. And then municipal buildings are responsible for about 3.7%, followed by public transportation, which includes like buses, trolleys, and railways, 2.2%. And then wastewater treatment and discharge, 1.2%, commercial vehicles, 0.9%, municipal vehicles, 0.6%. Waste, which encompasses landfill, biological treatment, incineration, and open burning, 0.1%. And then here on the right, just added together like municipal facilities and activities, and they're about a little over 4% of the total emissions in 2017 for Cohasset. And then passenger vehicles and residential buildings, as I noted briefly before, account for the majority of the town's emissions in 2017.
You know, can, can you just back up one slide for a second? I just want to the, this is energy emissions, and then that, so this is presented total building energy. And the next slide is, I'm just trying to sort of figure out the difference between these. The next slide is all admissions?
Yes.
And, and so the previous slide is a subset of this one, is that the?
Yeah, so first I went through this one, which is by sector, which is like transportation, waste, and then stationary energy.
Okay.
As a, like a subset of stationary energy, we have the building energy emissions here.
So this, this is stationary energy.
Let's see.
And the next one is?
And then this here is with, like, the community-wide emissions with the municipal emissions disaggregated. So then, like, in the actual inventory, like graph, like inventory tool, there's a graph that's similar to this one, but it doesn't include municipal buildings and municipal vehicles disaggregated. Those would just be included under, like, general buildings and general vehicles, if that makes sense. But here you can see them, like, not aggregated together, so then you can see the actual percentage the municipality is responsible for, like in 2017, for the emissions, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to reconcile the two, the two, so this, this slide is a subset of a previous slide, or is it the same data just split differently?
Yeah, maybe you could think of it as a more detailed breakdown of the slide two slides ago. So the full, if you go back two slides, Fran Sully's, right?
Yeah.
It's this graphic, but broken down in more detail, so we can almost have swapped the order, probably.
Okay, thanks. Okay, that's great. No, that's good. I just got it. So if I add up various things, they'll equal these, these three numbers that we take that disaggregated and aggregate them up. Okay, thank you.
And in the tool, we can share with you, all these graphics are there. I think Josh has access to it. I'm not sure if he had a chance to share with everybody. But all the graphics and numbers are there too, that you can pull from the originals.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question. Let's see.
And so the point you made, the point you're making here, the takeaway in that's that detailed slide is that the municipal buildings aren't that much of the total.
Well, I would say it's kind of, it's good to know the percentage, but also it's really important, you know, for municipalities to kind of take the lead in doing more energy efficiency work and other types of strategies, which then kind of helps residents see the change and the importance, and, you know, being able to invest in these types of strategies that are really important. So even though, yes, it is a very small percentage, I think it's still very much important to like take a lead in those types of strategies for climate action and reducing emissions.
Okay, thanks.
Awesome. So these were the infographics that I noted previously. Here on the left, there is one that notes kind of like the carbon per person in Cohasset, very high level, because it also includes like commercial emissions and such, is not as accurate as it can be, but just to include, as an example, 9.1 metric tons of CO2e per resident is like what they would be responsible for in 2017, if that makes sense. So the emissions per person is approximate, so it's just like a total of Cohasset's emissions divided by Cohasset's population in 2017, so that you can get an idea. But again, this also includes commercial emissions.
And, and it includes municipal and public services emissions as well?
Yeah, includes all the emissions, since it's all, like, the emissions added together divided by the population.
Okay.
What's the, is there an average in the state? Just curious to know how we compare.
That's a great question.
If there's an average?
I, I think we've pulled, I, my colleague has pulled numbers from different inventories we've done to kind of compare where communities land. I'm trying to remember where we have that. We managed to follow up with that information, but I'm not sure that the state keeps those numbers, and I think to the the points being asked, you could also calculate this number just based on the residential emissions factor, and it would be somewhat lower, because it's not. Some communities have a lot of business and industry, like Chelsea, obviously, and so that may make their numbers look artificially high in that case. But another takeaway here for you all, which is probably no surprise, you're a residential community, so most of your emissions come from residences, so your homes, their vehicles, et cetera. So those are important places to focus, which is why I, Fran Sully, said that building graphic earlier.
Thanks.
Yeah, and Stephen, do you have a question?
Oh, I have exactly the same question as Josh did. I'd be really interested to see Cohasset compared to other towns in Massachusetts or the state as a whole.
I'll see if I can dig that up during this call, but otherwise we could follow up with that.
Thanks, Julie.
Back to the higher.
Let's see, the right graphic is showing just like residence, business, and industry, and municipal and public services, these different types of, let me see if I can go back. So for residents, let's say, it's the sum of passenger vehicles and residential buildings under resident activity here, so about 77%. And then from businesses and industry, in this other graphic, let me know if it's confusing to be going back and forth. But for businesses and commercial activity, it would be commercial vehicles, construction, commercial and industrial buildings, and manufacturing industries, et cetera. And then for the municipal and public services aggregated percentages, it would include like public transportation, municipal, municipal vehicles, municipal buildings, and the waste and wastewater percentages that are on this graph. So this graphic here is just us trying to make it a little more, like the data a little more accessible from that other graph, which can get really confusing. So if you ever want to have like a meeting with folks from the community and such, this might be one that could be helpful in terms of showing where the different, like, residence category, business and industry category, municipal and public service category, lies within the emissions responsibility percentages. Allies within the emissions responsibility percentages. And then here is the concept map that I was talking about earlier that I think. Helps a little bit, I don't, I'm not sure if everyone has seen the inventory, but again, it has a lot of tabs. Um and this here kind of helps me a little bit conceptualize everything. So there's one tab after you input everything that includes the data and it's the all emission summary. Here you'll see all the data for stationary energy, transportation, waste, et cetera. And then there are tabs that will only focus on the different sectors, so there will be a tab on stationary energy. And then those would be, that summary tab would be followed by a tab about buildings, off-road emissions and then energy and industries emissions. And then the same goes for transportation, there'd be a summary tab, and then it'll be followed by on-road transportation, rail transportation. And then the same goes for waste, um and then the different subset tabs that go from there, so I think. If you're ever looking in the tool and get a little confused, um this little constant map might be helpful in terms of seeing. What the different tabs include, um and how it might be helpful to look through different types of data. And then one important note in the data, uh which you might see. In the inputs tab, when you look through what was included and what the different numbers were for twenty seventeen for the town. Is that there was no information for commercial development under construction for twenty seventeen for the town, so it'll, the. Inventory includes the county data, uh but then the number that's in there for the town, I believe, is one. Um so that's not included, or maybe it was that one. There was just no commercial development and construction, which I believe has happened for some other towns. Um but that's just one note. And then resources and guides, so as Julie was saying earlier, uh we have a step-by-step guide for the inventory. Uh where it'll know like where sources are coming from, um. And also where you can find different, other different types of data, such as like municipal data on. Electricity usage and natural gas and such. Um and then there's also a G H D inventory tool, virtual training. That was done by a previous colleague before and there's a recording available that you can access on YouTube. Uh so that's linked there as well, in case you wanna peruse the inventory or. When the new update hopefully is available and you want to update the inventory as well. And then there's M A P C's Net Zero Playbook, uh which can help, you know. Have you think through next steps on how to use this data and what kinds of strategies you can implement in the town. Uh to be able to lower emissions, um and you know, have twenty seventeen maybe as a baseline to do that as well. So I'll pass it on to Julie in case you wanna talk a little bit more about the playbook, um and I can. Stop sharing screen if that's helpful and if folks want, I can also add these links into.
Yeah, I don't think there's a chat actually, so maybe we. Must be the Zoom restrictions, so we could put together a brief follow-on email with the links. And also the comparative data, um we'll be able to track that down.
That'd be great, thank you very much.
Yeah, I can share with you, let's see here, um. Just do a screenshot of a few things I have pulled up. Um to go into a little more detail on what Francis was sharing. Um so I would encourage you, if you wanna geek out on the data and the inventory and understand it more. Um the three resources Francis mentioned, I think first we do have the hour-long recording that our colleague, our former colleague Meg. Recorded about how the tool works, that's worth watching and going through. Uh or if you just prefer to read and process, um we have our hundred and thirty-eight page guide on all of the data. Um in the inventory and where it comes from. And, and to the point Francis made, the electricity and natural gas data are from massive databases, since you're served by an investor on utility. We're able to pull them that way. And this clarifies different places where the data is community-specific versus where it's an estimate, because that's the best available information we might have. Um it is very long, but it's actually formatted in a really beautiful way, so it's um actually quite pleasant to read. Um you can also do a control F to search for different terms if you're trying to find. Different information as you go, so it would point you towards that, but because it is a fairly extensive. Tool, I don't think we have time to walk through the whole thing today, so I would point to that as one resource, we're happy to answer following questions.
So is that, is this, um will this outline the answer to Steve's question at the beginning as to? The, the level of local specificity in the data?
Yeah, so I'll tell you where the data is local specific, where it might be from the census bureau or other. Data sets that were used for estimation purposes, um but we built this tool to be Massachusetts-specific with um D N V G L consulting partners. So wherever possible, we use local data as much as possible, um and try to avoid estimations. Um so as more specific for Massachusetts, so that's one reason why. Uh we would fight towards this tool as, as the most useful for municipalities, obviously it needs an update, which we're working on and hope to have done it next year. So, I'm Stephen.
Um. So for instance, uh I'm wondering, let's take just the transportation sector for a second here. So to estimate the um amount of greenhouse gas. Emissions from internal combustion engine cars. Uh am I correct, you simply use the number of cars? That are registered in coacid, internal combustion engine cars registered in coacid and use the average. Emissions per car that you uh estimate for the entire state, is that, is that the way it works? Or is there some kind of individual assessment like? Uh you know, how many commuters do we have in town, what is your average commuting distance, blah, 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 blah? How do you, um, or is it simply uh just a uh? Uh estimate based on average number of miles tra- uh travel per car in Massachusetts?
Yeah, Francis, I'm not sure if you remember off the top of your head, otherwise this section on, on page twenty-one would explain the answer.
Yeah, I, I've looked at that briefly and maybe I've misinterpreted it, but it looked to me like it was, it was just. Taking average emissions per car regardless of where the car is. Whether it's in central Boston or in a rural area or in a suburbs, uh it looked to me like it was just an average per car. Multiplied by the number of cars. But, but.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, 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 that's my basic question, you, you understand, I'm, I really don't understand the methodology, I'm not so concerned with the actual numbers, I. I wanna know the methodology.
That's, and it's so important to understand the methodology to make sure, one, that, you know, when we do our inventory, that we're doing it correctly. Um and to every, everyone ask these questions, um every, every plan I've ever been part of, they always ask this question. Um but if I could ask M A P C, we did apply for um technical assistance. To create um a uh climate action plan. For, for coacid and we heard um for Hingham that we were awarded, but I haven't heard anything. Um yay or nay about coacid receiving any kind of technical assistance, I understand now you have to apply to D O E R. Um for that funding, but do you know where we are for coacid in, in that?
Yeah, so um I think taking these questions one at a time, um for the green communities, technical assistance. Um we, this round received twice as many requests as we had funding available to allocate. Um so need to follow up with communities this week, but since coacid received support from us this last round to do the greenhouse gas inventory. Um and your annual report, this next round, we prioritize communities that didn't receive assistance from us the last time around, so we weren't able to. Prioritize coacid in our application this time. Um based on the criteria of trying to spread the technical assistance across our hundred and one cities and towns, which is why I'm hanging on. Is, was included in our application this time, because they weren't to receive assistance the last time. Um, okay, so that's, that's the response there. Yeah, and we just submitted that application Friday at four. So on our list for this week was to follow up with everybody about that, so I apologize for the delay on that, um.
Oh, no, not, not a delay at all, I figured since we had you, maybe we could get breaking news, so thank you for that.
Yeah, and then I think, um, to the question Stephen was raised, if we kind of look at the chart here, um so what the vehicle census tells us is total. Vehicles by vehicle type, um and then I believe it is to your point. Unless there's a methodology Massachusetts has come up with for estimating. Miles traveled by town, um you're right, it might be statewide data that's used in the inventory. Um divided by vehicle type to understand that data, so a resident activity method. Um the new vehicle census, I haven't had a chance to dig into it yet, so I'll be curious to see if it offers any more. Detail breakdowns by community type, like whether you might be an inner core community versus suburban versus exurban versus rural in the state. To understand, so there may be opportunity to become more specific with our vehicle data um in the future. But it is at least based on a census of the vehicles in your community, um and average data for Massachusetts. But recognize that's imperfect.
I, I was aware, I guess about a year ago, I, I read about this really unique project of Google together with a university. Where they actually uh using satellite data somehow tracked uh the um. Uh miles traveled in every single road and not over the tiny United States, but uh parts of the United States. And so they knew, they knew exactly what the uh, you know. What the uh transportation greenhouse gas emissions was, because they tracked every car, you know, every, every mile driven. I was curious as to whether uh uh your methodology was similar, but the, not, it's not, I see, so.
Uh. No, and I also, I guess, uh. A response to that, that I often try to share with municipalities is, um. I think we can spend a lot of resources tracking everything perfectly, um and trying to get the perfect numbers in. Greenhouse gas inventories or in modeling that we try to do, but at the end of the day, it always will be somewhat imperfect. And I think the idea of these tools is to give us a snapshot of where we're at and to show progress over time. Um but really, I think what, what this points to, whether you have the perfect number for vehicle miles traveled or not, is we need to get people to electrify their vehicles. We need to green the grid. We need to electrify buildings and make them highly energy efficient. And to the degree possible, given your geographic constraints, get people out of their cars, walking, biking and onto public transit. And that's gonna be true whether that number is more deeply accurate because of Google data or using these estimates that we have here. Which I think still show you a good proportionality that residential buildings are really where most of our emissions are coming from, followed by transportation. Um, so that, I guess it's a response I'd offer is, um we will continue to try to improve these tools, but I also. Try to encourage municipalities to not just focus on perfect measurement, but instead to focus on what type of action can we encourage? Um as an alternative energy committee, as municipal staff, um as community members to start to change these numbers.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not interested in perfect measurements, uh my concern is with tracking, so for instance, um. If uh people got rid of their, uh their um fuel, um. Oil burning furnaces, boilers.
Yeah.
If they, if they eliminated those, would that be reflected in the next inventory or not?
For, um.
Because you don't track, you don't track individual oil deliveries in a town, as I understand it.
Unless there's a way to collect all the receipts from private.
So if, even if we eliminate every single oil burner in town, it might not be reflected in our next greenhouse gas inventory. Because you're not doing it that way, you're not.
Well, it would be as, it would be as accurate as the data we can get from the American Community Survey, where people report on what's in their homes.
Okay, so it's based on a, a household survey.
Yeah, which is a five-year survey that, that.
Right, but that's a, that's a U- United States Commerce uh survey, yeah, so that's, it's uh like a census data thing. Uh average over census tracks, okay, I got it.
Yeah, but unfortunately with fuel oil in particular, I mean. If you wanna go down this path with, with local staff, you can look at like permitting data to understand how many homes might still be served by fuel oil. Versus natural gas and try to track that way, but there's not really a great, there are no good. Statewide or local data sets otherwise besides the permitting data that may exist and. Towns have done that before, it's very time intensive and again. A question of is that where your effort should be spent, or are you better off trying to target, reach out to folks and tell them about Mass Save? And then it's a pretty great deal to get rid of your oil tank and switch to air source heat pumps and here's how to do it, so.
Well, in, in any event, uh what you're saying is, uh you feel that if we do a tremendous job of uh. Of helping our town, uh you know, convert, go all-electric and get rid of their fossil fuel stuff and switch to electric vehicles and so forth. We do a great job, you're confident that that'll be reflected in our future inventory uh results, right?
I am fairly confident would be reflected as soon as we're able to update the tool. And also, I think if you create those programs, there's ways you can track progress also, like. You can have people share when they've done things through um heat smart campaigns or um solarized campaigns, there's ways.
Oh yeah, but it'd be great, it'd be great to have a series of. Measurements, say every five years, uh greenhouse gas inventory and show that's making steady progress.
No, a hundred percent agree, and I think as much as we can, we wanna make that data more and more accurate.
Yeah.
Oil, oil is the hardest.
What's your target date, the, your, your hope for date for the next uh release?
Um I'm hoping to have it done a year from now, um the census data just came out, it needs to be clean. Um and then we need to hire a um consulting team to come in and shift and update our inventory. And look at what year we can go to from twenty seventeen, I'm hoping to make it as recent as possible. Um but the caveat to all of this is the last three years have been really weird, um twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. Data, especially for, for things like transportation are going to be a little bit off, um. So we may see, depending what year we pick, we'll have to talk to the, the partner that we work with on this about what they advise, because you wouldn't wanna pick twenty twenty. Um or even twenty twenty-one, it's just going to show you artificial drops that then have gone back up, most likely as people have gone back out into the world. At least in terms of transportation, probably not building energy use.
When we have um electricity data, you know, uh in, in um M E I, mass energy insights, so we have. We have that data and we can do like, um, which Julie was saying, we can do like deeper dives, it's hard to get the oil data. Um but we can, you know, find out, I mean, and, and again, mass energy insight is just for municipalities. But um there's other like C D P software that we can use. Um to try to track, you know, more and more information on, you know, our residents and then we can look at. You know, try to, try to narrow down, okay, well, what, what five oil companies are delivering to, to class of homes? And then try to get a, a snapshot of a picture like that, but I do agree with Julie that, you know, overall, I think that, um. You know, the, the bigger picture of, of focusing on residential and transportation and then greening our municipalities and our schools. Um and then you can drive yourself nuts with this data, especially with like three A going through, you know, how much do you take into consideration there? But um it, it's good to have at least a benchmark and, and we can work from there.
And, and I would point out to get a sense, without doing the inventory, just of like trends over time, you can go to mass save data dot com. And pull your electricity and natural gas data from there for each year twenty seventeen onwards, you could even just pull that at an aggregate. Um community level and see some of the trends, apart from the tool being updated now, so I think there's ways. To use some of the data sources from this guide to get some initial senses and then you guys will have, I believe, um. If Josh hasn't had a chance to share it, um if you're able to, Josh, the.
Yeah, I shared that.
Great, so yeah, the Excel model's here with everything that's built in, so you're welcome to take a look at that too, and this is the tool. That we'll wanna update and look at the methodologies and data sets we're using and as much as possible, if we can make them more specific, we will. Um but this, our tool, I think is the most Massachusetts-specific tool that exists. For greenhouse gas inventories with the caveat that it is from twenty seventeen at this point.
Could I just quickly ask who the person on the phone is? I somehow missed. Who that is?
Oh, you didn't, Daddy, you don't recognize my voice? It's Jimmy Leclair, Sustainability Coordinator for Cohasset in Hingham. I'm sorry, my wife.
That's alright, sorry.
Hi Jenny, I didn't recognize your voice either.
Hi, oh, I'm sorry, I was trying to speak for a little while and then I didn't realize that I had to push like star six. And I was like, why can't anybody hear me? So I joined, unjoined. Um I'm sorry about that, I, I thought at one point I did introduce myself, but I think it was just to myself. Um so, sorry, Judy Leclair, Sustainability Coordinator for um Cohasset in Hingham and, um. I am uh on the phone but not on video because of that, why, sorry.
Uh I got a question, another question for Julie and uh Francis, Francis, Frances. Um I noticed that on your spreadsheet, you have a trends sheet. But there are no trends, and she had just one, we have just one data point. But you could put in trends for, as you were mentioning, uh. From uh mass save data for uh natural gas and electricity anyways. So maybe it'd be nice to, to fill out that, uh that spreadsheet, those trends with just the data that we can easily get. Through Man and Save.
Yeah, I think you could definitely do that and it, it's set up where you could, for example, pick your years um and playing from Mass Save and set some of those up. Whether in the spreadsheet or elsewhere, um.
Okay, so you're suggesting we do that and not let you do it?
We um we unfortunately don't have any further technical assistance dollars at this time to support this work. Um our time has to be grant funded, so at this moment, I cannot do that for you, but I think it would not be too difficult, hopefully, to go in and pull those numbers if you're interested. We designed the tool. Um this round, the Green Communities Program supported us in filling out inventories for communities. Uh they're not that wasn't a category that they offered for us to provide assistance this next round, actually, because I think it's the view of the Department of Energy Resources that hopefully a community could take this tool and guide and do it themselves.
Well, obviously.
Community or somebody would like to do that.
Obviously, you could use more funding. I'm wondering, are you aware of any um bill before the legislature that would uh grant you additional funding to uh continue this work and make it uh increasingly useful for towns, like, for instance, putting in the trends that you can put in and so forth? And getting up updates more frequently than once every seven years?
Yeah, I think our goal is is really focusing on trying to update our tools and making them as user friendly as possible. Since we serve a hundred and one cities and towns and we're a staff of seven, um we don't have the bandwidth to work with every community on every project. Um so as much as possible, where we can, we're trying to create tools and templates to make it possible for volunteers and and local town staff to lead that work with support from us where we can offer it. Um so we we do have some funding, grant funding already set aside to update this tool, as I noted. Um and then this next tab I have open actually here. Oh, I thought I had it open. Um this is our net zero playbook. So this was another resource we um worked with several towns to create and um use grant funding to create. But our goal here was to kind of create a step by step guide so that if you're a municipality um and wanna take action in your residential building sector and your transportation sector, that there is um strategies you can take. So just kind of peeking into the buildings chapter. Um the playbook is broken down by chapter and would point you towards this. And there's different actions you can take in your community that we identified as as high impact and have a step by step guide to walk you through. Um so those are resources that exist. Um I can also share that one of our big projects starting this fall and and running for the next two years is to develop a climate action plan for our whole region. And this is a program that was created under the Inflation Reduction Act from E P A. Um and we have been selected as the entity to lead the creation of a regional climate action plan that they've requested that um the largest metropolitan regions in the country create. So as part of that effort, um we'll actually be able to do more detailed modeling of different strategies that are highest impact at the local level, defined highest impact, not just in greenhouse gas reductions, but also in terms of equity impacts and costs to communities um and effort to implement. Um so we'll be able to actually do some modeling on strategies like this and be able to give you that data, which will hopefully help you as a town, even if you don't wanna do a net zero plan or have the F uh the funding to do a net zero plan. It could hopefully give you guidance on these are the things I should try to do. Um and E P A also will be releasing a lot of implementation funding for individual cities and towns and then also for regional projects like the strategies you see listed here. So it's a little preview of where our work is going. And we're trying to focus a lot on the regional scale planning efforts and building tools and resources to help make local level action and decision making easier for you all.
So uh now that Cohasset has community choice aggregation, uh which I think is a biggie.
One of the biggest things you can do, correct?
Yeah, so I'm wondering uh what your advice might be on the next steps, like for instance, how important is the net zero building code? The the specialized uh stretch code uh versus other things we could do? Or where where do you think we ought to put our effort to make the best, the fastest progress?
Yeah, um stretch the specialized code, I'd say very important. Um it will only impact new construction and major renovations. So that also depends, I don't know the construction situation in Cohasset, like how much new housing or how many new commercial buildings you are building. But it's the strongest tool we have to make sure that any new construction or major renovations touching fifty percent or more of the building. Actually, the specialized code doesn't apply to major renovations. So let me just say new construction. It's our strongest tool. I want to make sure that that is as near to net zero as possible. Um it's not quite a net zero code yet, but we expect over time it will be. I think a second impactful thing you can do is scaling up the amount of renewable energy in your municipal aggregation program as much as possible. Um so I think if someone mentioned you're at ten percent more than the utility, if you can ratchet that number up more and more.
Yeah, we have an option for a hundred percent, but we have trouble getting people to sign up for.
No, I know. Um so it it depends on market conditions. Some municipalities that started aggregation programs at really ideal times um like Brooklyn and Newton, I think I'm not gonna get the numbers right, but they've been able to get between thirty to fifty percent more renewable energy in their programs at a cost competitive rate. So it just depends on the market conditions and working with your broker. But trying as much as possible to do well there. And then there's kind of an unprecedented opportunity right now to do outreach campaigns and to help residents tap into the great incentive programs that we already have via Massive. And then look in the coming year, a lot of those are going to get even stronger as the federal incentive programs through the Inflation Reduction Act layer on top of those. So we expect to see mass save plus the federal incentive programs, the Department of Energy Resources will administer kind of stacked together. And so if you're looking at your home and how can I make it more energy efficient, there'll be many more financial resources to make it pencil out for you. So I think that's where a lot of the really hard and important work lies is how do you get homeowners, their heating system comes out to go to a different heating system to an electrified heating system? And you get people to insulate their houses and you get them to get rid of their gas stoves. That's like the hard work that really will need to happen. Um that's.
Julie, I I've heard from several people that they've had a lot of trouble navigating the mass save uh uh rebates and and discounts. Um is there an easy to use guide, not through mass save perhaps, but from somewhere else that will help people navigate the complexities here? I I I don't think it's simple for people.
I'm trying to think if there are other resources that I could point you towards. Maybe Francis, can you write that down as a thing we can think about? Um I mean, the mass save program, it's run by the utilities and it's supposed to be public facing and accessible. Um people have had varied experiences and some of that depends on the contractors you might work with or where you're coming from to the program. Um there is an effort that the state is working on right now um to create what they call a clearinghouse program, so kind of a one stop shop where residents and businesses can go for everything kind of related to their buildings. So possibly thinking about shifting the front door from mass save to this other state state concept. Um but that's probably a year or two off. Yeah, I my personal experience with mass save is the um it just depends a lot on the contractor you use um and how diligent they are about filing the rebates for you, which they should do. Or at least give you the receipts to file the rebates. I've had a mixed experience as well. Um where if the contractor gave you what I needed, it was very easy. And when one did not, it was very frustrating. So it is definitely imperfect.
What do you know about the federal, the federal assistance?
From the. The federal program is they're still under development. So the Department of Energy Resources has submitted comments to the federal government about how they'd like those programs to be administered. Um and then the concept, I believe, is that the incentives at the household level will um be programs that states will administer. So the Department of Energy Resources right now, I think, is figuring out will they run those programs? Will they layer them on the mass save? What will that look like? But that, those have not rolled out quite yet.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think um we are at the top of the hour. I know folks are stepping away from their workday or other things. So I think we have time probably for one more question and then translate and I'm probably need to hop off and translates may need to hop off. I'm not sure your schedule. You have a hard stop.
I just wanted to say this is Jimmy again. Um thank you so much for taking this time. And um are you able, when you send out um this email, to resend the um the plans that you had had talked about? Um I don't seem to, I don't think I have a copy of.
You mean the the inventory tool, um the slide deck? Yeah.
Yeah, but also the the as a you mentioned that you did a twenty seventeen inventory, um if you could send that.
No, I think there was some confusion. Um our inventory tool's baseline year is twenty seventeen. But I believe we developed this for Cohasset in twenty twenty two. So there's just one inventory we've developed for you all.
So, okay, if you could send that then with it, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, so I think things I heard you all say, we'll send you the tool and the slide deck and we'll send you links to the guide and the playbook. Um we will look into if there is a better not a better, if there's an alternative to mass save for navigating mass save or other resources we might wanna highlight. Um and then we will try to find that comparative data that you had all requested. How does Cohasset kind of measure up against other communities? With the caveat that uh one of those calculations include non-residential admissions. They can be a little fuzzy depending on the composition of your community. So um I think that was everything I heard. Sorry.
That was it.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Julie and and Francis. Appreciate that.
Thank you, guys. Uh it was wonderful to hear your presentation and I appreciate you answering my questions as obnoxious as I as I was.
Um no, no worries at all. No, I think you're um asking good and thoughtful, inquisitive questions. So um your town is lucky to have all of you working on this. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good day. Thanks.
Bye. Bye, Mike.